I call this meeting to order. This call this meeting of the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code, Chapter 551. We will now adjourn to the executive session according to the Open Meetings Act 551. Good evening and welcome to our board meeting on this great Monday night after we had a very exciting afternoon, didn't we? I hope you all got to see it. Yes, it was wonderful. It was wonderful. Okay, I now call the meeting to order. And is Reverend Doug Harrell here? If you'll come please, sir, and we please stand for the prayer and the pledge.
Father, we worship you tonight. We praise you and thank you, Lord, for this house. Father, we thank you, Lord God, for these leaders here tonight. We ask for your blessing and your anointing to reside upon this house. Father, as our sister has said this morning, we are reminded who controls the celestial events. It is you, Lord, and you showed us your majesty today. Father, this afternoon, Lord God, and tonight, tomorrow, the talking about these storms, Lord, we rebuke them in the name of Jesus. Lord God, we thank you for the gentle rain, but we rebuke any effects from our brothers and sisters, these buildings, these schools, our lives. We look to you tonight. One of the seven spirits of God is the spirit of counsel. So we thank you, Lord, that the spirit of counsel would reside among this house tonight. And these leadership and these parents and directors will give, receive information from you to lead and to guide these precious students, our most precious investment that we have. We thank you and praise you and ask you for this this afternoon in Jesus' sweet, precious name and God's children said.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, we have our pledges today from Lawrence Elementary.
Here you go, Lawrence.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you gotta stay standing, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Before you go, guys, before you go, introduce yourselves, please, would you?
My name...
Loud, yeah.
My name is Sophia Ariaga and I'm in fourth grade.
Thank you. Awesome.
My name is Arabella Vazquez and I am also in fourth grade.
All right.
My name is Paige Garrett and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Joanna Leon and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Justin Comanero and I'm in fifth grade.
All right, thank you. You guys did an awesome job. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Yes, okay. It is now, is there anything for our board moment? Anyone?
Sure.
Okay.
So, on the eclipse note...
Yes, sir.
I had the chance to spend the afternoon at Potteet High School. And of course, we had a perfect viewing. The clouds opened up right at the right time and it came through.
I know, I know.
But the most thing that caught me the most was not the actual eclipse itself, but was the hundreds of high school kids standing out front. And every one of them reacted the same way at the same time. It was just a mesmerized moment of wow, and you could hear it when it went dark and just realizing that they've never seen it before and they may never get to see one of those again. So kudos to us for being there and for the folks that put that together. And it was an amazing day, I think, for a lot of kids today, so it's really good.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, Madam President, I also want to say a couple of words. So there was a lot going into this decision to have school today, and I will tell you by the messages that I received, I don't regret the decision, but I also want to extend a message of gratitude to my cabinet, central office staff, and the teachers and administrators in the campuses that came today to work and provided a unique educational experience for our kids. Yes, we had a low attendance because I did look at the numbers, but for the kids that showed up, they have something they can talk about for the rest of their lives, and I just simply want to say thank you.
Thank you. So you don't think you're gonna be here for the next one? I don't think I am.
No, ma'am.
Oh, you don't think so either?
I do think Eddie Rhodes is gonna still be on the school board in 24.
There you go.
300 years from now.
Yes, what is it, 150 years or something like that? Okay, all right, for our student and staff recognition.
Okay, we're going to begin by honoring our new Apple Corps honorees this morning, this evening. The first one is Tiffany Coles from Candidate Elementary School. She teaches second grade and we have a video to introduce her to you.
Ms. Coles is a 14-year Mesquite ISD teacher. All have been at Candidate Elementary. Ms. Coles builds the most phenomenal relationships with her students. Her loving spirit is infectious in her classroom and throughout the Candidate hallways. Her high expectations of students and fun classroom experiences are what makes her a standout teacher. Ms. Coles is every student's dream teacher and what educators aspire to be, a well-respected and impactful teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Coles. Welcome to the Apple Corps group.
I think that teaching is very important mainly because of the impact that you can make at such an early time in a person's life, that you get to be the impact that they might need in order to achieve their dreams. They might come from a place where they feel like they can't achieve what they are dreaming of deep down, and you can be sometimes the only one or a supporter in a village of people that can help them see that they can achieve those things. I don't think I'll ever leave the classroom. I love it here because I think it's such a big deal and I really love being here in my home district of Mesquite.
That is yours. I'm gonna read this proclamation for you. It says, whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Tiffany Coles in the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this eighth day of April 2024. Thank you so much for what you do. You're making a difference. You got a lot of cheering crowd.
He said I have a great cheering crowd. He told us exactly what to do. I'm worried for everything, so.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board and Dr. Rivera, my heart is extremely full of gratitude and humility as I accept this award. I really appreciate the way you guys take time with the Apple Corps recognition, this whole process. You guys really get to know us and that means a lot. This is not just an honor for me personally, but it's definitely a testament to the incredible support and guidance and encouragement I've received from so many remarkable individuals throughout my journey here in Mesquite. As a graduate of Kimball Elementary, Kimbrough Middle School, and Potteet High School, I'm the product of the leadership that runs so heavily through those halls. Yes, go Pirates. To all the teachers who touched my life, thank you for this incredible gift. Hold on. I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the past and present principals and administration who've been instrumental in shaping my career. Dr. Jeannie Stone, Dr. Jonathan Royal, Ms. Jenny Peaburnbrink, Dr. Lauren Chisholm, and Ms. Chrissy Cormier, your visionary leadership has made me the teacher I am today. Each of you has seen something in me that I did not yet see, and I'm profoundly grateful for the opportunities you provided me. You are leaders who ask questions of your teachers and then you actually listen. You've trusted me enough to let me grow and shine, and it has been a priceless gift to my students and I. To my teaching tribe, past and present, they're back there and it's making me cry, excuse me. You know who you are. I've worked with the very best and words cannot express the depth of my appreciation for each and every one of you. You're not just colleagues, you're my mentors, my confidants, my sisters and brothers. Together, we've shared so much joy, challenges, setbacks. 2020 as a teacher, I could go on and on, but I could not do this life without you. My Candidate family, some of us go way back and we do a very hard job. I could not do it without my Candidate tribe. I also have to take a moment to express my gratitude to my parents, who are here tonight. From the very beginning, yes.
Have them stand up.
Oh, yes, stand up, Mom and Dad. Everybody, I says, they're so cute. From the very beginning, you've been my guiding lights, my biggest fans, and my greatest role models. Your unconditional sacrifice and belief in me have been the driving force behind my achievements. Almost done. To the parents of my students over the years who have trusted me with their kids, it's not lost on me. The trust you put in me daily, and it has meant the world. Lastly, to thank, I'd like to thank my students, past and present. You're what wakes me up in the morning. Your smiles are what drives me each day, and you teach me how to keep going, to believe, to dream, to laugh, and to sing, especially when the song is really good. You are why I'm here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. You got some other people?
Yes, if you're here for me tonight, you may stand.
Yes, please, please, yay! Thank you, thank you.
All right, our second honoree this evening is Linay Evelyn Sanders from Austin Elementary. She is a fourth grade teacher there, and here's a video about her.
Mrs. Sanders is very deserving of this award because she is so kind and so loving and generous with her time. She works very hard for all students. She creates lessons that are engaging and differentiated for every student in her classroom. She loves her job and she makes every day a special day for everyone. Around her, her laugh and her positivity are infectious to all. We love Mrs. Sanders. Congratulations.
So I think teaching is important because we provide all the essential needs that students need. We provide them what the knowledge, the skills, and even the values that they need in today's world. I know as educators, we go in every single day just trying to be the best educator we can be by providing instruction that is beneficial, intentional. And so I think that's my thing, is just making sure my students have that chance to explore different concepts, be able to use their curiosity in different types of environments. So teaching plays a big role in how our students are shaped and formed in today's world.
This proclamation, and it reads, whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Linay Evelyn Sanders into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this eighth day of April of 2024. Congratulations.
Okay. First and foremost, I would like to thank my Austin family. We are a campus that is reflective of the Mesquite ISD goal, excellence always. I work alongside some amazing educators that go above and beyond to ensure the success of their students. Knowing that they hold me in similar regard is incredibly humbling and inspiring. I would also like to thank the Mesquite ISD family. Thank you, Mesquite ISD, for providing a nurturing and supportive environment that empowers educators like me to excel. I'm forever grateful for God calling me into this profession. Teaching is my dream job. As a young child, my twin sister is actually in the audience right now. You can stand, Renee. We're identical twins. Oh, there she is. Yes, okay. It's a story behind this. So I'm so thankful for her because her and I, when we were younger, we would take home transparency papers and vis-à-vis markers and play teacher. So thank you, Twinkie, for sharing that dream with me then because it has now become my reality. Lastly, I would like to thank my loved ones. The journey of an educator comes with its challenges, and having a supportive family at home makes all the difference. To my husband, who is also a Mesquite ISD educator, thank you for your support in the bi-weekly flowers, but just make sure you don't forget a week, okay? And then to my oldest son, who attends Potteet, thank you for your patience and understanding during those late evenings. And Jaden, you can stand. He's at Potteet High School. And then to my youngest son, who's just a few weeks away from his first birthday, thank you for your morning smiles that brighten my day before I start work. He couldn't be here though for today, but he's here in spirit. Also included in the circle of loved ones are my former and present students. Thank you for all your, I don't want to start crying on this part, but, okay. Thank you for all of your unique experiences that have helped shape me into the educator that I am today. And special shout out to my current students that looped up with me this year. I'm so incredibly thankful for each and every one of them. And again, thank you, Mesquite ISD, for playing a significant role in fulfilling my dream.
Thank you. Is there someone you'd like to have stand? Would you like to have somebody stand that's supporting you? Oh, yes.
My Austin family's right over here.
You bet, you bet, yes. We would like to take about a five-minute break at this point in time, so. Oh, sorry, oops. Yes, we're not. Sorry about that.
We have a couple more recognitions before we can do a break. Each month, we also select one of our Star Para Professionals for special recognition, and this month is no exception. And I'd like to ask Mr. Morris to come forward and tell us about his Star Para, Renee Brown.
She's gonna slowly make her way up here because she does not like to be the center of attention for sure. Well, good evening, and it's an honor to have Ms. Renee Brown join me tonight as the newest recipient of the Star Para Award. Renee is a graduate of North Mesquite High School and has worked for Mesquite ISD for 31 years, beginning in August of 1993 at McKenzie Elementary when her children started. Following McKenzie, she worked at Tyser, and then she helped open Gray Elementary. She then moved to Central Office where she served both the Curriculum Department before moving into Admin Services. As a brief reminder, STAR and Star Para Award is an acronym for Stellar Teammate Award Recipient, and that truly defines Renee. Renee feels that excellence always means providing the best service to families and our staff in each interaction she has. She also says that her goal is to always try and make someone's day just a little bit better. Some members of the Admin Services team shared the following. Renee is thoughtful and full of energy and joy. Renee is dependable and thinks of how decisions will impact others before she concerns herself how it will impact her. You can see Renee's desire to be kind in her conversations with us, but more importantly, in her conversations with parents and families. See a need, address a need is a trait that exemplifies Renee. And finally, Renee is not boastful. She's a servant to others, which is a critical element to being a great teammate. Renee is definitely the glue that holds our team together, and I cannot think of a better person to help me navigate these first couple of years in this role. Again, it's an honor to recognize Renee Brown as this month's Star Para.
And our final recognition this evening is for a coach who helped save a student's life. Physical education teacher at Tosh Elementary, Jamichael Palmer, is being presented with the Life Saving Award tonight. In late February, Coach Palmer was alerted to a student choking during lunch. He rushed to the student, performed the Heimlich maneuver, maneuver which saved the student's lives. The board recognizes Mr. Palmer's outstanding quick action and is proud to honor him with a Life Saving Award this evening.
Now we can take our five-minute break, so thank you, thank you. Nobody listens. Okay, we are ready to resume our meeting, please? Yes, thank you, thank you very much. All right, our next part of our agenda is the consent agenda. This is a action item. Is there a motion? Okay, by Kevin Carbo, a second by Gary Bingham, okay? Is there any discussion?
Madam President, I'd like to point out that the week of April 7th through the 13th is Librarian Appreciation Week. Wanted to make sure we point that out, that they do a fantastic job for this district.
Yes, they do.
A great resource for our students and our staff at all the schools, and we really do appreciate them.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carried. Okay, is there anyone here, ma'am, for an audience?
I'm coming.
Okay, thank you. All righty, and Dr. Rivera?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. So you received the recommendations from administration for several positions. I would like to entertain one vote, and then we'll proceed if you got the bios and all the information and the questions been already answered.
Madam President, I move that we approve the contracts for the administrative positions.
Okay, Mr. Seward, a second by Mr. Bingham. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, guess what? You can do it.
All right, so now there are no longer recommendations. They're newly approved employees. So we're gonna start with Cody Groves. Please approach the lectern.
Who are these people?
Your whistle was for me. Well, board, Dr. Rivera, excited to introduce you to our new PE and Health Coordinator as PE and Health are coming underneath athletics next year. So Daniela Rodarte is a proud product of Mesquite ISD. Coach Rodarte received her bachelor's degree from Houston Christian University in Kinesiology and Education, where she also played college softball. After graduation, she had a great opportunity to work at Texas Tech University as an assistant softball coach for three years before returning home to Mesquite. She began her career in MISD in 2018 as a physical education teacher and head softball coach at her alma mater, The Mesquite High School.
Oh, my.
I've never had to say that. She also received the First Class Teacher Award for her campus in her first year of teaching. After four years of coaching, she transitioned to the elementary level and served as the physical education teacher in McWharter Elementary. In 2023, she was fortunate to help build the foundation for the 34th Elementary in Mesquite at Cross Elementary. In total, she has worked in Mesquite ISD for six years and is excited to continue her career with the district that gave her so much. So Coach Rodarte, will you please stand up to be recognized?
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, okay. I'm gonna move on to our next, our next one. Board, Dr. Rivera, again, excited, along with Dr. Simmons, to introduce you to our new head football coach, campus coordinator at West Mesquite High School. Close? A native of Dallas, Texas, Coach Stephen Jackson is entering his 16th year in education. A graduate of DeSoto High School, Coach Jackson has seen coaching stops at Dallas Carter, Wilmer Hutchins, Dallas Seagville, Red Oak, and Dunkerville. His most recent stop is the campus athletic coordinator and head football coach at Dallas Seagville, has seen back-to-back playoff appearances after a five-year drought. They also saw 11 student athletes receive football scholarships this past season, which was the most in school history. Again, Dr. Simmons and myself, we're excited to introduce you and bring up Coach Stephen Jackson.
Quite, quite a crew, crowd, yeah.
That's huge for me. First, let me say thank you to the board, Dr. Rivera, Dr. Simmons for having me, and Coach Groves. This is a dream come true for me. Mesquite ISD has been, I mean, well-known across the state for the great way you treat people, how you treat your staff, your kids, and we're excited. My family, if y'all are staying, and my football family too. You gotta know that you're not just getting me, you're getting all of them and what comes with it. You heard my mama clapping before they started, so Friday nights is gonna look the same. But I'll say this, and to the stampede back there that came to support, they knew I was hired before I knew I was hired, so I'm excited. But I'll say this in closing, I don't want to keep too much of your time. I was watching a video this morning, and this is how I knew I was in the right place. It said, be the soul where you are. And, you know, I felt like we were the soul of Seagville when we were there, and we're excited to be the soul of West Mesquite.
West Mesquite has a very large place in my heart. I love that school, that high school, so congratulations, you're in a great place. You really are, yeah.
I love the color coordination in your fashion.
I know, I know. Yes, very good. Well, welcome to MISD, both of you guys. Welcome, okay.
We also have two assistant principals that are gonna be read by Ms. Jo.
There you go. Be refreshed, okay. First, I could ask Jennifer Grady to stand, please? All right. Ms. Grady is the new assistant principal at Porter Elementary School. She has completed 20 years in education, all with Mesquite ISD. She began her career at North Mesquite High School as an English and reading teacher. After 12 years at North, she then moved to the Learning Center as the testing coordinator for five years. In 2021, she joined the staff at Porter Elementary as the campus intervention specialist. She earned her bachelor's degree in education from the University of Kansas and her master's degree in teaching leadership, teacher leadership from Lamar University. And now if Shannon Hughes would stand, one minute, okay? Shannon Hughes is the new assistant principal at Austin Elementary School. She is a 16-year veteran of Mesquite ISD and began her career at Austin Elementary as a third-grade teacher, and later taught both first and second grade there. After 13 years in the classroom, Ms. Hughes transitioned to the early literacy instructional coach position at Austin Elementary. Ms. Hughes earned a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from Texas A&amp;M Commerce and a master's degree in teacher leadership from Lamar University. Congratulations, Ms. Hughes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we have an action item to approve probationary and... Okay, we have an action item to approve probationary and term contract renewals, teacher facilitators, nurses, and librarians. Do I have a motion? Kevin, was that you? Mr. Carbo, a second by Ms. Collier. Okay, is there any discussion? All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by the same side. Motion carried. Okay. Action item approved, contract recommendations. Is there a motion? Okay, Mr. Everett, a second by Ms. Collier. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those by other sides, say nay. Motion carried. Okay. Report resignations and election replacements. We don't need that, all right. Okay. Yes, we are ready for our effectiveness report from our innovation in instruction technology. Thank you, guys, for coming. We appreciate you, guys. Hey, how are you?
Y'all let me know when you'd like me to start. I want to make sure I get that done.
All right.
You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. We are so excited to have the opportunity to present our team to you tonight. Ty Preiniger, my coordinator, and I lead a team of 18 innovative, service-minded maximizers who are committed to being the difference between what is and what is possible in our schools. As the rookie in the department this year, I have been blown away day by day by these amazing humans and what they do in our schools. 10 minutes is not nearly enough to share our story with you, but we're going to try. Leadership is influence, and as our job is to influence and enhance the work of others, we must be constantly in pursuit of the opportunities that we have to learn and grow. Our team continues to utilize the LTO framework to evaluate and leverage our strengths and identify our areas for growth. Each year, our ITCs develop goals based on the dimensions of the LTO and focus their path of professional learning in order to gather evidence of impact in their chosen areas for growth. As a result of developing our capacity, we are seeing impressive levels of impact on our campuses. Last school year, our 18 ITCs had ongoing coaching relationships with 332 teachers. This equates to thousands of students who benefited from their work. Many of these one-on-one partnerships-led teachers led to the teachers presenting professional learning experiences on their campuses or taking on campus leadership roles, which just multiplies their impact. This year, just from August to now, our team has led over 235 professional learning opportunities just on campuses alone. These have ranged from integration of digital curriculum resources and blended learning to strategic implementation of IO and use of other AI tools to improve efficiency and effectiveness. The relationships developed between our ITCs and their coachees have some outstanding outcomes. One of our favorite stories from this year came from Potteet High School, where our ITC Jaime Duran supported the amazing Shayla Prince in developing a nine-week-long project in which students chose a topic to research, designed a product to showcase their learning, and presented their findings to their peers. There is no denying that Coach Prince is a phenomenal teacher all on her own, but she'll be the first to tell you that her partnership with her ITC resulted in an experience for her students that would not have seemed possible without his support. This year, principals and campus leaders are increasingly leaning on their ITCs to help them solve campus-level problems. They have invited them to serve on their leadership teams and have asked them to assist in designing and improving campus systems. Examples include systems for campus walkthroughs, regularly scheduled mood check-ins in IO, creating assessments in eduforia, and many more. To highlight just a couple of examples for you, at both North Mesquite and Vanston, ITC Selena Knight worked with campus instructional leaders to design and grow the Wicker Roundup System, which promotes best practices for instruction and gathers evidence for teachers' use of avid strategies across the campus. This year, at Agnew Middle School, they set a campus goal to develop student agency, and their ITC, Robin Rodriguez, has supported them at every turn. In the fall, she designed a protocol by which teachers were able to schedule times to observe one another as they facilitated lessons that incorporated student choice. Teachers were even able to provide feedback for each other in such a way that it automatically documented evidence of progress towards their T-Test goals. There is so much more I could tell you about both of these projects and more, but we've only got a few minutes left. So, Ty?
Good evening. Our team exists to support and enhance the work of others, and we have the opportunity to partner with just about every department in the district. This work ranges from automating catering requests to partnering with library services to create innovative learning experiences. We're really proud of the work we've been able to accomplish with Chrissy Davis and her amazing counselor team, counseling team, over the past couple of years. Their voices have been instrumental in building all of IO's SEL features like the mood check-ins and the adult assistance workflow for students in need, along with dozens of videos that teach kids how to regulate their emotions. As a result, we've seen exponential use of IO for SEL support, especially on our non-pilot campuses. One big project that we're currently working on with personnel and many others is improving onboarding for new employees. We're excited to partner with each of these departments to add efficiency and continuity and help make every new employee feel welcome and valued in our district. So as a result of these strong district partnerships, our team provides professional learning to deepen and extend the knowledge and skills to a broader audience. So the numbers reflected on this screen, excuse me. I am going.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So with the numbers reflected on this screen, excuse me, show us the requests that we've had from teaching and learning, the content coordinators. They show us the, excuse me, the classroom and device management sessions that we offer to New Teacher Academy, and the pay-for-knowledge courses that we offer to all of the employees in the district. So we've been intentionally pouring into our team's presentation skills and alignment to district priorities, and participants' feedback is at an all-time high for those sessions. Participants describe our sessions as relevant, engaging, practical, and empowering. And we're really seeing a diversely skilled workforce, so we're striving to meet the unique needs of all of our adult learners by tailoring our sessions and offering choice. And that's echoing the type of learning that we need to see from our students and for their needs and their environments. So not only are we charged with offering great content, but we're also committed to staying ahead of the learning curve when it comes to new technologies. We're always prepared to share and support the most innovative practices that are trending in education. One event that we put on is our Code Play Talk Hackathon. It offers kids a unique opportunity to foster and showcase an interest for computer science while also developing essential soft skills like problem-solving and critical thinking and working collaboratively in a team environment. We're really excited to see the rebounding trend of increased participation post-COVID, and we anticipate even more growth with the development of IO's Club Hub feature. That's going to help make clubs and extracurricular activities on campuses more visible by suggesting, making suggestions to students based on their passions and aptitudes. And I'd like to highlight just an example of multiple people coming together to ensure that all students have these awesome opportunities. Our ITC Selena Knight worked with her campus personnel and our deaf-ed teachers, and John Campbell in audio and visual, to rig up a camera to give a student a close-up live feed on his own personal device so that he could actually write code to navigate our MACE challenge. So what we'd like to do is share others' experience working with our team.
Kaitlyn really helped me come up with new ways to get my students to have choice. She was able to come in and model for me, show my students exactly what they needed, and that way I knew exactly what I needed to do whenever I created a new choice board or playlist.
All right, here at Mesquite High School, we're so blessed to have our ITC, Zoo. She's done a wonderful job for us. As an IO pilot campus, we've really focused on goal-setting, and she has done a wonderful job coordinating that with our sponsors, with our clubs, and also with classes, helps students set goals, track those goals, and hopefully see some achievement of those goals throughout the year.
We are extremely grateful for their willingness to partner with us in teaching and learning. They have been faithful to provide great sessions on blended learning, on Google Classroom 101, on how to differentiate using technology in the classroom.
We got the opportunity to implement Summit K-12 here at the West Mesquite High School, and our teachers wanted something for their non-EV students to do, so Brittany Harrelson and I worked together to create assignments for our native English speakers in both history and English. All I had to do was send her a Google document with the content, and she put it into this magnificent choice board, and we didn't lose any ground. So our EVs were able to get the support that they needed from Summit, and our native speakers were able to enrich their learning as well.
Zoo has taken the initiative this year to get into our PLCs and be proactive with our teachers and help them with the resources and planning needs that they may have.
And then we've also had some big initiatives where the ITCs have been indispensable because we were out of professional learning days, and so we needed a way to get the information to our teachers to get them trained, and that was a huge thing for our teachers to have that support on their campus.
If you're not using your instructional technology coach, what are you even doing?
Use your ITCs. They are absolutely amazing to have in a classroom. They are willing to do that work for you and to come in and help you whenever you're teaching your students a new playlist or a choice board, or even do station rotation through blended learning.
You have to have your instructional technology coach there. They are partners in your career, they're partners in educating your students. There is truly no reason why a person should not collaborate. That's just the best way you're going to get the best out of your campus and the best out of yourself.
So I say, go find your ITC at your campus, give them a call, they will be more than happy to support you.
And now, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, and I'd also like to take a minute just to thank my amazing team for being with us tonight. So, thank you so much.
This is so, thank you, guys, for everything you do. Really do appreciate your department, Ms. Jackson. Yes, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I believe, yeah, I believe our counseling, Ms. Davis, is next.
She was right, 10 minutes, it's hard to tell you everything we want to tell you in 10 minutes. So, good evening, Dr. Rivera, President Hornsby, and board members. Tonight, I get to report on counseling services for the 22-23 school year. So according to TEA, campuses are responsible for providing a comprehensive guidance program to students. A comprehensive guidance program includes guidance, responsive services, individual planning, and system support. Mesquite ISD counselors work to build a model that incorporates the essential components of academic counseling while emphasizing wraparound, mental health services, social-emotional learning skills, and behavior and instruction supports. Gone are the days of what we called a guidance counselor who helped with college applications, changed schedules, and waited for crisis to arrive. Today's counselors not only assist in all of those academic areas, but also in social-emotional development and are the true mental health professionals on their campus. The vision for Mesquite ISD Counseling Services is to support the development of students academically, emotionally, and socially to graduate and to be productive members of their communities and their families, and our mission is to provide students with the best care anywhere. As you can see on this slide, this gives you a small snapshot of the highly qualified counselors that make it Mesquite ISD Counseling. We strategically used ESAR and Title money to provide training and additional certifications to our counselors, including EMDR certification and 30 counselors trained in the NOVA crisis model. That expertise and training will extend our skills and our services long after our ESAR funding has run out. I'm proud that we utilize those funds in a way that will last many years for our students and our community. Since we've worked hard to build highly skilled clinicians within our staff, we're always able to respond to crisis situations within our district without needing to rely on external support. It is exciting that every single student in Mesquite ISD has access to a highly qualified school counselor. When I did the math, our Counseling Services Department has a total of over 2,200 years of experience in education and public service. An extremely important activity in secondary campuses is academic advising. This consists of all instructional aspects of school counseling, from enrolling students to building master schedules and student schedules, to spring registration and course selections for the fall. In the 22-23 school year, around 70,000 academic advising interactions occurred, and you can see that we've increased that every year. Counselors give guidance to students to help select courses, to understand graduation requirements, and choose an endorsement and a pathway of study. In addition, counselors monitor student progress, work to identify students who may need additional support or services, and ensure that students are earning all credits towards graduation from high school. Counselors also partner with our advanced academic staff to help students develop and meet goals, explore options, and connect students to post-secondary opportunities, including career, college, and military options. In the 22-23 school year, 7,360 guidance lessons were delivered to students over a variety of topics as listed here on this slide. Common topics are character building and SEL skills and career and college readiness. Guidance lessons allow counselors to reach as many students as possible in a classroom setting. Our elementary schools do a great job of guidance, of delivering those guidance lessons, and we're always looking for strategic ways to expand more into our middle school and our high school. All students in grades pre-K through 12 are learning about their emotions and being aware of how they feel. They learn coping skills to help them regulate their emotions, such as mindful breathing, how to settle their glitter or get to green, as a way to give their brain time to catch up to their emotions, along with other important interpersonal and self-regulation skills, including goal-setting and building empathy. Social-emotional learning is not just a program, it's a practice and a mindset. As a district priority, Mesquite ISD acknowledges the importance of SEL and the role it plays on academic success and a student's sense of belonging, and also how it will prepare students for the future and any difficulties that they may experience along the way. At the conclusion of this year, we will evaluate SEL implementation at each campus and look for areas of growth and where improvement is needed. Since social-emotional learning is a district priority and a part of the strategic design plan, we now have a committee composed of various stakeholders dedicated to the work of SEL. These pictures are another example of a unique way that we utilize ESAR funds to create an area for students to learn and practice self-regulation in every classroom called Green Spaces, where students learn how to self-regulate and get to green. We also work closely with the IO team to create a mood check-in feature where students can log their daily mood and get strategies to help with self-regulation. This feedback also provides information for campuses to identify students in need of more support. It's a really exciting tool, and it's only available to Mesquite ISD students. We know that students learn best when they're in the classroom engaged and focused, learning through direct instruction, and these are just some tools that we work to provide with that goal in mind. Senate Bill 179 is regarding the Public School Counselor Work Time Policy, and it states that to protect public school counselors' work time, the school board must adopt a policy which requires that school counselors spend at least 80% of their time on counseling program-related duties. Data collected monthly by school counselors is displayed in these charts. The gold pie is the inappropriate duties, and it represents the amount of time that Mesquite ISD counselors spend doing non-counseling-related duties. In Mesquite ISD, overall, our school counselors are in really good shape, spending the majority of their time with students fulfilling counselor duties. This is largely due to the structure of Mesquite ISD, where we have test coordinators responsible for testing, and 504 duties are performed by multiple staff members. While there's room for improvement, it's definitely something to celebrate. We will honor these recipients at the next board meeting, but in the 22-23 school year, 36 campuses received a Crest Award from the Texas School Counselor Association, honoring their work. This is the most ever for Mesquite ISD, and it's a testament to the work that they're doing on their campuses. The Care Clinic has now grown to being, from a little part-time thing one night a week, to open five days, four nights a week, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And I do have a short video that I'd like you to see that gives you a small glimpse of the work that happens at the clinic and what we provide for the district.
In a community where every heartbeat tells a story, there's a haven for those seeking In a community where every heartbeat tells a story, there's a haven for those seeking solace and support. A place where care is more than just a word, welcome to the Care Clinic of Mesquite ISD. At the Care Clinic, we believe that everyone deserves access to quality mental health support regardless of their financial situation. Established in 2017, the Established in 2017, the Care Clinic was created to make mental health services accessible to Mesquite ISD students and families, and extended to include Mesquite ISD staff in the fall of 2020. Our team of dedicated counselors provide a confidential space for individuals to explore their emotions, navigate challenges, and find their path to healing and restoration while developing coping skills for the future.
Like counselor taught me this, feeling like water. So, you can't hold on to your feelings forever. There are ways you can calm down, but if none of those ways work, then really, you just have to feel your feelings. Sometimes that's the only way to feel better.
From one-on-one sessions, play therapy, family sessions, to group therapy, we offer a variety of services, in person and through telehealth, to meet the diverse needs of our district, all at no cost to our families and staff. In addition to our full-time staff, we partner with Texas A&amp;M Commerce and provide internship opportunities, increasing the number of available appointments and counselors and maximizing our budget.
It was really positive. I always felt very encouraged and understood. This year was hard personally, and she was there for me. And she made me feel really supported and would check in and was really consistent. She has really helped me emotionally, and I feel like I've really grown, and so I'm really thankful. This is one way that I have found that the district has given back to me, is that to help me take care of myself within my mind and my thoughts, and it helps me to treat myself better, which in turn has helped me to treat my kids better, my coworkers. So even if I'm feeling maybe burnt out.
Post-COVID, with increased mental health concerns, ESER funds were utilized to add five care facilitators. Assigned to each feeder pattern, these counselors were able to travel to the secondary campuses and provide services to our most at-risk students. These students likely would not have had access to mental health support in any other way.
It's impacted my life. Like, it has made me more expressive, made me feel more confident in myself, paying more attention in class. Also helped me make new friends. My therapist, so yeah, she's always asking how I am, how has my day been going? Yeah, she's funny and really kind.
This also allowed more availability for Mesquite ISD staff appointments during the day and after school.
It has been amazing, to say the least. Been an enlightening experience working with her. She, she has, she has really helped me with the path of healing. I'm super grateful for her. When I first came there, I was in such a dark place. She really helped me through the grief, you know. She's really been such a voice for me, like an ear for me, like, man, I'm grateful for her.
In the first half of the 2023-24 school year, the Care Clinic counselors and facilitators provided 4,438 sessions to students and staff, resulting in a savings of over $665,000 to our MISD community. At this rate, we predict by the end of the 2023-24 school year, we will have saved our community over $1.3 million and provided close to 9,000 counseling sessions. The Care Clinic is here and ready to continue serving our community.
So as you can see, the clinic is a place of growth, recovery, and restoration. It's very unique. It doesn't exist like this that we've found in the same model anywhere else. It's provided services to students and staff that they likely would have not had access to in any other way. And the number that you heard in the video of $1.3 million, I want to point out, that was just in this year alone that we estimate for what a normal counseling session on average would cost. This is our seventh year of existence, and we've continued since the dip in COVID. We have increased the amount of clients and families seen each year at the clinic. With the addition of those facilitators, we were able to extend our outreach to the campuses and grow the number of evening appointments that we have available to staff, while giving campuses additional support. In an era where teachers are struggling with staying in the teaching profession, we have added a resource to protect our valuable assets, teachers and campus staff. And in your board report too, you'll find a lot of personal comments from our surveys of people saying things like, "It's an absolute asset." Personally, I can say I'm alive today from the help I received from the Care Clinic, and I've been in counseling elsewhere, and it does not compare to the help and healing I received in their care. So you'll see a lot more comments like that in your board report as well. So looking to the future, we are really focused on continuing to operate in a proactive approach. We want to continue to improve our counselor-to-student ratio, match students with appropriate post-secondary opportunities, and ensure that they are college, career, or military-ready, enhance our social emotional learning implementation, and provide more support to campuses, and continue to provide quality to support to students, families, and staff through the Care Clinic. I do want to think, take a moment to thank our board and leadership for everything they do to support our counseling program. Our counselors and social workers are hard workers and always have student well-being in mind. They support Mesquite families and their own campus staff through mental health concerns, grief, and trauma. So much of what our counselors do is confidential, it's hard to measure, and without much recognition. And so every time you say yes to supporting our program, we're able to provide more services to Mesquite students and families. And so we're very grateful for that support, so we thank you. So that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions.
We do, we have some of the best counseling in the world. And I appreciate that not only we take care of kids, but we take care of our staff too. So I think that's a kudos to us.
I definitely have not seen that anywhere else.
You have a healthier staff, yes.
Home run.
Thank you. And it's not lost on us that you're doing this 1 to 340 average at the high school level, when it should be 1 to 250. Of course, everything in balance, state funding, et cetera, et cetera. We're always trying to figure out how we can get there when we can, when the resources are available.
We would love that.
But the amount of work you guys do at that level, I really appreciate it. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job.
And I was going to say, it doesn't go unnoticed totally, because we know what you're doing there. You have a lot of kids that, you are their window to what happens after school as well, which is another thing that the counselors do. And without you, they have questions that don't get answered. So thank you.
Kristi, I noticed on that one slide that we had five certified chemical dependency. Is that something we've always done, or is that fairly new?
No, we partnered with someone at A&amp;M Commerce last year, and he started providing the training and supervising them so they could get their intern hours. So really and truly, I don't have enough time to go into all this, but we've grown our own counselors. So almost everyone we have started out as a school counselor that we, through the program, through the internship at the clinic, they give us hours and we give them supervision. So we've been able to grow our own LPCs, our own interns, our own LCDCs too.
And people don't realize the number of hours that go into LPC, et cetera. So that's a huge step.
And it's a mutually beneficial relationship. It benefits the person who needs the hours, and it benefits us because we get that time.
Yes, very much so. Thank you.
Very strategic.
So Ms. Davis, before you walk away, I mean, I think the board members have expressed all that your counselors do, right? And all the amazing things that we're covering in our district. I get a lot of phone calls about, from other superintendents in terms of like, how are you guys able to do this? And it's just, you know, there's a support that we give you, but it's because of your outstanding leadership, so I will commend you on that.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, President Hornsby, Dr. Rivera, and school board members. I'm here today to give you a very brief update on our School Health Advisory Council. I had the pleasure of leading our School Health Advisory Council this year alongside MISD parent Laura Sherard. This was Ms. Sherard's second year as our co-chair, so that position will rotate next year. I appreciate her dedication and willingness to serve alongside me this year and for serving in that position for the last two years. This year, the SHAC was comprised of 11 parents that represent all five feeder patterns plus vanguard, three community members, two students, and four district representatives, which are all listed on the slide in front of you. The job of our SHAC is to assist the district in ensuring that local community values are reflected in health education instruction. In past years, our SHAC has ensured implementation of the CATCH program and helped set policies for physical education, including approving a growth and development video for use by our school nurses just this year. The MISD SHAC held four meetings this year, and each meeting was audio/video recorded and uploaded to the SHAC page of our district website as required by House Bill 1525. During our first meeting of 2324, our SHAC got busy. The members worked to create guiding purpose and bylaws for our group so that we are constantly reflecting on our purpose when we're making decisions. This work continued into the next couple of meetings as we discussed and refined our governing documents. Our second meeting included a presentation from our very own Director of Counseling, Kristi Davis, about the requirements of House Bill 3908 concerning fentanyl awareness instruction. This meeting did have a recommendation that you'll see on the next slide. During our third meeting, the council looked at curriculum provided by our CTE department as a part of our instructional materials adoption process through Proclamation 2024. The council took time to look over resources and ask questions. They then voted to provide the school board with the recommendations that are in your book tonight. Our last meeting of the year, we looked over data from our triennial assessment and wellness policy review. Sorry, switched too fast on you. The activities that the district will provide campuses to meet the requirements of House Bill 3991, Texas Fruit and Vegetable Day, if you didn't know that, that's this coming Friday. And we finished up our Go Red campaign. All meetings were conducted here in the boardroom because they have to be audio/video recorded. We have to be in this room. So you do have in your book tonight, the recommendations thoughtfully and intentionally made by the SHAC for the required instructional pieces from House Bill 3908 relating to fentanyl awareness instruction and CTE instructional materials up for adoption in conjunction with Proclamation 2024. These are the only recommendations that the SHAC had for the 2324 school year. As you can see, our SHAC was busy this year. The council is an amazing group of individuals that truly care about our community, and I enjoyed being the person that got to facilitate them this year. At this time, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it very much.
It was fun.
It's encouraging that that many parents showed up.
Yes.
So that's wonderful, and it's from every feeder pattern.
And our very last meeting, one of the biggest things we said was just the conversation that they had was...
Oh, I can imagine, yes.
And they just listened to each other and shared, and so it was, it was an amazing experience.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time now to conduct a public hearing on the annual performance report. At this time...
We will close our regular meeting and open a public hearing for comments on the annual performance report. It's called a taper report. As posted, the school, we are required to advertise and hold a public hearing in regard to this. Is there anyone to address the board? Ms. Joe? Seeing none as president of the board, I now declare the meeting closed for public comment. Huh? What, gavel? They always make me do this gavel thing. And so we are now back to our regular meeting. All right. You had to work so hard for that one, didn't you? It was hard work. Yes, I know it, I know it. Okay. All right. Is now we have an action item on that we need to announce the annual school board training credit. It is, no, it is an action item. Now, it says right here, announcement of annual school board training credit.
It's just a report though.
Is it? Okay, did they get that wrong? Okay, all right. Yeah, you're right, you're right. Is there any comment on this?
In order to keep Mr. Everett happy, I do have one class that I'm still scheduled to take. I had it scheduled for today, but the eclipse blew it up.
That's true.
Actually, I was enrolled for the wrong class, and so, but I will get it done, I promise.
I know you will.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Is it online?
Yeah.
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 I know it, I know it, yeah.
I would say that all the board members, I know they got those two to do, but board members have met all the other requirements and in fact have exceeded their training requirements in all the different categories as required by the state.
Yes, yes.
Our board members go above and beyond. Appreciate that very much.
Yes, we do, yeah, yeah. I'm always amazed at when you go to conventions or whatever, the number of school board people that don't do this. And we have yearly, always, I've never known our school board, Dr. Rivera, not to have this. So it's something to be proud of, part of the school board, so. All right, next on ours is approved matters pertaining to the regular school board trustee election, May 4th, 2020-24. And this is an action item. At this point in time, what? What? Yeah, yeah.
Is it an action item?
Yes, it is, action item. We're getting, yeah, this is an action item. But also, I need to introduce those that are on the certification of candidates. And for place six, Elaine Hornsby. And place seven, Carrie Bruce, Ms. Bruce, if you'll stand, and Mr. Kevin Carbo Sr. All right. So this is an action item, and we adopt a resolution certifying the trustee candidates and set a date to canvass election returns. And our election returns will be what, in June?
Monday, May 13.
Is it May 13?
Five o'clock.
Okay.
Move to approve. If we can make it all in one motion, I move to approve.
It is listed, there, I see it right here, yeah. And second, by Mayor Spingham, and a second by Ms. Collier. Is there any... I believe Mr. Morris. I don't know why is that? What? Am I good? Okay, all right. Mr. Morris for District-wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Finding, sir.
Yes, ma'am, and I have some updated information Mr. Morris sent me this morning. We have had 47 of our 50 audits performed, 32 of 34 elementaries, nine of 10 middle schools, and all six high schools have had the intruder audit. So we're just lacking a handful more. I have no doubt, they've told us that they were going to take care of every campus this school year, so they're on pace to make that happen. We have had great results, especially as of late this semester, and very little to discuss at all in regards to what the intruder auditors have seen on our campuses.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Morris. All right, action item to amend the District of Innovation Plan. Who's going to speak to that?
Carrie Jackson.
Oh, Ms. Jackson.
I am, I am. So we are bringing to you tonight an amendment to the District of Innovation. As you'll recall, back in 2022, December of 2022, we approved, or you approved, the District of Innovation Plan, and it encompasses these areas, class sizes, addresses start date, contract time period, educator certification, contract days, and then planning and preparation time. As you heard from Mr. Morris last month, as we were looking at open enrollment, there were some areas that we wanted to bring to you to consider addressing. And so we're proposing an amendment to our District of Innovation Plan. The Texas Education Code 25036 says that transfer students are required to follow attendance requirements and rules and regulations of the district. Additionally, the Texas Education Code says that transfer agreements must be granted for a period of one year. So what that says is that we cannot, they stay throughout the full year once we have accepted that transfer. We believe that allowing non-resident students that do not meet compulsory attendance requirements and/or exhibit disruptive behavior may limit opportunities for our resident students. And so what we would like to propose is the superintendent or designee may revoke the transfer of a student should the student exhibit disruptive behaviors that lead to classroom removals, such as ISS, OSS, DAEP, JJAEP, and/or fail to meet compulsory attendance requirements. I believe you have in front of you the full statement of the Texas Education Code there. I believe you have in front of you the full statement of the Texas Education Code there. Our DOI committee met last week. The committee was comprised of parents, community members, business owners, and educators. We met on April 4th, and they unanimously approved the amendment to the DOI. Are there any questions?
In this wording, we have sufficient ability to screen the forward.
So yes, we will, it's not in this wording, it's how the transfer is approved?
It's in the, it's in the policy. That wording will be in the policy. The policy, the DOI has to be first approved before the policy is going to play, because this will be our catch to not go the whole year, as Ms. Jackson alluded to.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to amend the DOI plan.
Yes, all right. Motion by Mr. Everett, and in second by Mr. Rose. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side? Opposed? Motion carried. All right. All right, approve the revised policy, local inter-district transfers, and open enrollment. There you go. Mr. Mars?
Good evening, everyone. And last month, we presented information regarding potential changes to FDA Local, our inter-district transfer policy. And as a reminder, with these changes, we want to be able to maximize our current staff and continue offering great programs to our students and families, and we want to maintain the integrity of our feeder pattern alignments. Additionally, we feel that all questions around this potential policy change have been answered through your approval of the DOI changes tonight, also by limiting the window for out-of-district families to apply for a transfer, and in our eligibility considerations, which include instructional space, instructional staff, academic performance, discipline, and attendance history, and through an assurance that the transfer will not limit the educational opportunities for our resident students. Again, the administration has provided the board with the proposed language to revise policy, FDA Local, in accordance with those aforementioned suggestions, and this is an action item.
A motion by Mr. Seward, and in a second by Mr. Carbo. Is there any discussion or question?
Just clarification, that this is what we're voting on? This is to enact the policy, or this gives us room to write the policy?
The policy is there. It's to enact the policy, and it gives us the ability to do it. Yes, sir.
How does this, I think it's a good idea, but how does this affect like Vanguard, when you have kids that are transferring in and out?
So, kind of used Vanguard as an example last time on the whole piece about not limiting educational opportunities for our families. And so with Vanguard, you all know that there's a matrix, and our students, our own internal eighth graders, apply to get into the different colleges or pathways of study at Vanguard. And we exhaust, like, we're gonna guarantee the spots for our community students. Then, if somebody from outside, an eighth grader, ninth grader, wanted to come in from outside, we could potentially approve that if there was open spaces. So I think I used health services as an example. If, once we've got all of our kids through the matrix and we have ten additional seats left over, then we could potentially approve somebody from out of district to fill one of those ten spots. Again, we're trying to maximize our staff as we see it. But if we filled every one of the spots, then we would not approve anybody from outside to go into health services. So the priority goes to our, our community members and our community students.
And then, once they're in for a year, they move further up the matrix?
And so they would stay there, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, do we have a plan to market this to the area?
That was the next question.
Yes, we do. We've had some discussions about the potential for this, and yes, we would get this put out. Ideally, in a best-world scenario, in future years, we'd probably open this window a little bit sooner than where we are today. One, because it allows us to, one, we have finished the matrix, we've done all of our internal transfers, that would have already happened. And so now we have our staffing model set by personnel, and we'll know where the holes are that we have, where we have space to be able to approve.
About how many kids do you think?
I think it's just a guess at this point. I thought there was gonna be a lot of traffic today, but there wasn't a lot of traffic.
So Ms. Collier?
That was it, that was me.
So Ms. Collier, you know, Mr. Morris talked about, like, we don't predict this is gonna bring a large number of kids this year. What this is gonna help us, because this is kind of late, like he was talking about, we wanted to provide a thirty-day period from the time that we discussed this to the time that we actually have an action item, right, and take action. What we're looking at, if I must be honest, is we'll probably bring a couple kids in, but then we'll solidify the process and make it systemic, so next year when we do it, we can actually start a lot earlier, and then we'll start looking into that. But when he first started talking about the two goals is maximize our staff and keep our programming. I want to be clear on that, and he was very clear with those two goals. Maximize our staff is because if our enrollment continues to decline, the number of kids has to be proportionable to the number of staff members. So we want to keep the staff that we have, because we have great staff. But we also want to keep the programming to ensure that we're still providing what we currently have, and then some, and continue to be innovative. Those are the two goals. But I don't predict probably between twenty-five and thirty-five, if that many come in in the following year.
Okay. And our goal is basically to start low with our education, in our education programs in our pre-K through three, so it's gonna take a while to reach out into surrounding areas, so. You've done a lot of hard work, thank you.
Still got stuff in front of us, but we'll get it done.
Yes, this is an action item, yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Action item carried. All right. You can move forward, Mr. Mars. All right.
Okay, how many of you have all the time? It is seven fifty, and we are now adjourned.
There's some, there's some large hail, it's supposed to be.